Good afternoon, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court, fifteenth of January two thousand and eight. As we do all meetings, we normally start with invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I think what we're gonna do is, uh, we'll do the pledges and then we'll come back when we get into the regular session through somebody to do the invocation, we will do it at that moment in time, alright? So let me have Mr. Godfrey Gatsa lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the US flag, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas flag.
(Inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag, United Texas America, and to the Republic for which we act, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one indivisible. We don't know who works for that one. Alright, that's good enough. They normally have the Texas flag thing come down, where is it?
I always forget "under God."
We struggle with that one so much. Thank you, Godfrey. We'll figure it out next time, huh? It's alright. 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 Do I hear a motion? Do we go into executive session? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Benavides, um, to discuss two items. Item A, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel ten for right-of-way for FM seven thirty-two pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel sixteen for right-of-way for Dixieland Road pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. When we come out of executive session, we'll be, we will be recessing until five-thirty, and that's when the regular meeting will get started, okay? (Inaudible) Session, moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Wood. We are out of executive session. Item A, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel ten for right-of-way for FM seven fifty-two. Do I hear a motion to accept the appraised value of five thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel sixteen for the right-of-way for Dixieland Road. Do I hear a motion to accept the counteroffer of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Uh, we're gonna be hopping around, 'cause Commissioner Gatsa's on his way and he wanted to address, uh, some items. Um, if you don't mind, would you like to go, let's go to, uh, he wanted, yeah, he wanted to listen to Mr. Gatsa's presentation, so we can wait on that one. Uh, let's go to the presentation of the quarterly report for Cameron County International Bridge System. You know, before we get started, Edna, would you like to do a, an invocation and get out of the way since you just did a good job of it? Please.
Please stand. Dear heaven and lord, we thank you for the attendance here today. We thank you for the privilege of being able to serve our county. We ask your blessings upon our employees, upon our elected officials, that we may continue working united for the betterment of our constituents. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Let's move forward with the, uh, Mr. Gatsa, we're gonna wait for Commissioner Gatsa to get here, he wanted to listen to your presentations, okay?
(Inaudible)
Alright, thank you. Uh, presentation of the first quarterly report for the Cameron County International Bridge System. Mr. Gatsa, see ya.
Judge Commissioners, this is a report for the first quarter of this fiscal year, October, November, December. Um, you should have the reports in your packet. We, um, as everybody knows and has been well publicized in the, in the news, we've experienced some decreases in our bridge traffic, um, both pedestrian and, and commercial. This detailed report will show you what, what we've seen this first quarter. Um, in the gateway, at the Gateway Bridge, we had a, um, total bridge crossings of one million eighty-one thousand slightly. Um, that represented about a seven percent decrease over that same time last year. Um, for to- total revenues at the same time, um, this year at Gateway, we had one point five million in revenues, which represented about a seven percent decrease, um, roughly about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Um, if you wanna move on to the Free Trade Bridge, at the Free Trade Bridge, um, we saw some decreases as well in our pedestrian traffic and our auto and axle traffic was down as well. Um, but overall, we did okay as far as total, for crossings. We had a total crossing count of two hundred thousand, um, and that represented a one percent increase, um, slightly over a thousand, uh, cars and trucks. Um, during this time, we also had the transmigrante traffic, which is heavy during these months, so that helped, um, traffic during this time at the Los Injas Bridge. For total revenues at the Los Injas Bridge, we had, uh, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, um, which represented a decrease, a slight decrease of about two thousand dollars. Our Veterans Bridge crossings totaled five hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, which was a, about a seventeen percent decrease. Uh, as you can see, our, uh, our decrease in pedestrian traffic at the Veterans Bridge was significant, um, and it hit us pretty hard over the holiday season. Our, um, auto traffic as well was down, I'm sorry, pedestrian traffic is not as significant, our auto traffic hit us significantly. Our total revenue for the Veterans Bridge was one point nine four eight, um, million, which was about a twelve percent decrease. All in all, we had a, a nine percent decrease for all our bridge crossings, um, representing about an eight percent decrease in total revenues.
So the, the total variances, this page is the one that summarizes everything, right?
Yes.
Just, can you tell me the, uh, the county's portion of eighty-eight hundred dollars? Well, how, how do you get from the eighty-seven thousand to the eighty-eight hundred? Is that because you've, you've taken our hundred percent plus fifty percent of each one?
That's correct.
Okay. So in essence, what we've lost for the first quarter has been a little under nine thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's when you look at both revenues and expenditures.
Okay. Okay.
Because you, you've cut down on the expenses in order to be able to make up some of the loss in revenues.
Right.
But aren't those expenses pretty much fixed? Or which, which is a variable cost?
Yeah, we have decisions, yeah.
We've deferred some things and some.
Right, we have decisions that remain open, uh, and, you know, we don't wanna fill until we absolutely necessarily have to do that, in an effort to try and control the expenses because of the, the drop in revenues.
So that's where the, that's where you're, uh, trying to make up for it?
That's what we've done this first quarter. If, if the trend continues in the drop in revenues, then, you know, we, we'll have to come to the court with a plan on.
But really, Pete, I, I think that's, that, that's what we need to be doing. If the revenues are not coming in, then you, you know, you, you cut expenses somewhere else to try to offset that. That's why the, the variance is only nine thousand dollars, right? So, so we've already, okay, I understand that. And I think that's, that's, that's what you ought to be doing. Any questions?
Uh, the other, at the Free Trade Bridge?
That's our transmigrante traffic.
That's a, the, when they take two or three vehicles at a time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 'Cause that's significantly increased, but it's not identified anywhere there except the?
Other.
On the other.
Right.
Okay. So that continues to hold very steady as far as that traffic is concerned?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge the first quarter report for the bridge system?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Uh, let's go back to the regular, we don't have to recess, 'cause you're, we're gonna recess for a few minutes, Commissioner, but you're here now. Public comments, only had one person that signed up, Javier, you wanna make a public comment?
Good evening, Judge Commissioners. The only thing I wanted to mention was, um, I want to formally and publicly, um, thank everyone for their thoughts and prayers for my brother. Uh, he was in a motorcycle accident right before Christmas, and he's been in the hospital for the last three weeks or so. Um, and Suzie, uh, from Human Resources is, uh, I've been working with her, trying to do a blood drive, and we've set it up for tomorrow. And, um, I just wanna thank her, she's, she's done a wonderful job trying to set this up for my brother, um, and, uh, you know, he's recovering real well, but there's, you know, he has some complications, so I just wanna thank everybody and, uh, thank Suzie as well.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments, and some of them are directed to Javier and his staff. We were notified, it can't be made public, right? Yes. The letter's in the mail. We were notified, uh, last Friday that the Parks Department had been awarded a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the Laurelles Park, and I wanna publicly thank Javier and his staff, and Joe, and engineering, and transportation, and everyone that had a piece of, put in the application together, and the Department of Parks and Wildlife also, 'cause they were very instrumental with us. And, uh, that's gonna be well, well utilized in the process of the planning as to what's occurring at that park. So, uh, thank you guys for doing that hard work, and I know they're trying to organize to be at the commission meeting in Austin on the twenty-fourth of this month, so we can publicly thank them there when they do the award for us. Uh, also, I would like to add that we've been notified by the Department of, Texas Department of Transportation, we've been getting a lot of bad news lately from that group, we got some good news. They will be issuing the seventy-five million dollars worth of bonds for the third call for the Colonia Program in February. I know again that the Transportation Department has been working for months already in putting our plans together to present to them as what the priorities are that they will bring to this court for approval before they present up there. But that means that we'll have an opportunity, again, to, uh, utilize funds that are not local dollars that can make a big difference for our community. So I wanna thank Pete and, and the Department of Transportation for already working on that, and, uh, hopefully sometime in February, we'll get, uh, their plan to us so that we can approve as a commission to proceed with the application process.
And identifying the areas.
Right.
Thank you. Any other public comment from anyone that did not sign up? Okay, item number four, presentation by Godfrey Gatsa regarding the levy rehabilitation project in Hidalgo County. We've been getting a lot of, uh, press over that, Mr. Gatsa, so educate us.
(Laughter) I don't know how much I can educate, but I will try. Again, Judge, greetings from Hidalgo County on behalf of my judge and our commissioner. Uh, y'all have a beautiful facility, I haven't had the opportunity to come here before, but I'd like to commend y'all on your facility. Uh, yes, Judge, you are correct, there has been a lot of information, both positive and negative regarding the border fence, uh, the levy system, FEMA, flood control impacting Hidalgo County for the past six, seven months. Uh, I think what initiated a lot of this conversation was the decertification of the levy systems, both in Hidalgo County and I would assume through Cameron County in January, by the, uh, IBWC, International Boundary and Water Commission, which is the entity responsible for the maintenance and certification of the levies. That has all come about by the issue that took place in Katrina and the failure of levies in New Orleans. Uh, the United States has started an initiative to certify any and all levies and dams through the whole United States. Uh, based on that, Hidalgo County and Cameron County got hit with a decertification of our river levies. And on top of that, basically, Hidalgo County itself, based on another federal issue, which is the map modernization, which is bringing up all the FEMA maps up to date, got hit, uh, about two years ago, that we were, based on our growth, being hit with the new maps coming out in Hidalgo County. So all of that is compiled and moved forward. In the analysis of the decertification of levies, Hidalgo County saw itself in a predicament in which we were gonna have close to ten to eleven billion dollars worth of properties with the levy being, being certified on the river in harm's way. That evaluated came out to insurance premiums of over a hundred and fifty million dollars a year in the area that would be impacted by the decertified levies on the southern extreme part of Hidalgo County. Uh, basically, Cameron County itself has not gotten to that point. I believe y'all are gonna be addressed by FEMA within the next twelve to eighteen months regarding the new maps coming out in Cameron County and moving forward and updating those maps. But right now, Hidalgo County got hit with that situation. So the issue of the decertification, the maps coming forward, Hidalgo County has gone forward and, and remapped as part of its process. And then it came about with the decertification of the levy that Hidalgo County and Hidalgo County Drainage System Number One passed a bond issue. Again, we are fortunate in Hidalgo County that we have one drainage district that encompasses all of the urbanized areas in Hidalgo County. We just have a small rural section that is not maintained and operated by a drainage district. So thus, it gives us a very strong capital base in the tune of about twenty-one billion dollars, which gives us the ability to leverage taxes for any drainage improvements for the community as a whole. Based on that, the drainage just went forward, developed a bond issue, sold a hundred million dollar bonds in November with almost sixty percent support of the community for the initiative of the bond issue. Those hundred million dollars gave us the capital with which it's leading to the discussion that I'll go into the levy, that it gave us the, the capital that we had, a hundred million dollars worth of approved bond issue money to do drainage improvements in Hidalgo County. That was split up on numerous projects, Raymondville Drain, a new outfall for Hidalgo County, numerous laterals to improve our drainage system because of the growth that Hidalgo County is going through, and the initiative of putting ten million dollars into the levy system to roll over as, as the sections became about. Well, that was great in November, but here comes January and the IBWC comes forward and says they're all decertified. Here comes FEMA and says, okay, a hundred and fifty million dollar insurance premiums. Here comes the Red Cross, we will open no shelters in case of hurricanes south of Expressway eighty-three. Here comes the Maquilas Industry, billions of dollars to keep General Motors, Emerson, and all the other companies up north available to keep the economy going, potential of shutdown. Here we go, putting six hundred thousand people in harm's way with no way of evacuating. You saw the exercise that Hidalgo County went through this past hurricane season. Based on all of those situations, the board came about in reallocating funds of those hundred million dollar bond issues in the tune of forty million dollars to move forward on the reconstruction of the levies, especially on the western side of Hidalgo County, because we're where water runs downhill.
Godfrey, just, just, just a point of interest, what, uh, how much or how long of a stretch are you doing with the forty million dollars? How many, how many miles are you doing?
The forty million, the forty million dollars was just a number that the Commissioners Court put onto the table without getting the actual dollars. The actual reconstruction of the levies within Hidalgo County is in the tune of sixty-seven million dollars. That is the amount of money that the International Boundary and Water Commission, in their engineering estimates, has dictated would cost to reconstruct the levies in a dirt embankment. So that is where we were, made our commitment that we were gonna fund all of this money through the MOU to reconstruct the dirt levies that were there in Hidalgo County.
But how, I guess I'm, I'm asking how, and lengthwise, how many miles were y'all going to do?
About sixty-seven miles.
Oh, sixty-seven miles.
Yes, sir. That is the total levy system within Hidalgo County. When the decertification came out and we started seeing the border fence issue that was coming into Hidalgo County, uh, the judges, the judge both from our county, J.D. Salinas and yourself, Judge Costco, started evaluating the issue of the negativity and the non-acceptance of the border fence down in our area. Uh, we went to the local International Boundary and Water Commission, the, the idea of combining a border fence or a wall, a hydraulic structure with a levy, IBWC said no. Then we went to the, uh, DHS, they say no. Then we went to the Border Patrol and said no. But again, that did not stop the issue in which we kept going forward and knocking on doors and numerous trips to DC, until I guess they finally said, well, let's see what these people are talking about, maybe there is some sense to it. That brought about the issue of the court coming back and certifying that they would pay forty million dollars to leverage that with DHS to avoid the construction of a fence in Hidalgo County and convince him of building or reinforcing the levies. And the major issue that came across was that what DHS was looking for was an eighteen-foot vertical impediment. It might have been a chain link fence, it might have been whatever type of structure. So we were able to show that in Hidalgo County itself, some of the levies are twenty-two foot in height. Some of these levies are gonna have to be elevated five, six, seven feet to meet the floodwater elevation. So then all of a sudden, it started making sense, well, if you can have a vertical wall in here and it reinforces the levies and it complies with the requirements that we have for a border fence, let's start looking at it more closely. And that's what's gained a lot of speed and momentum, both in Washington. We're, we're happy to say at this time that border, or DHS itself, has concurred with the concept, Border Patrol has concurred with the concept, IBWC is evaluating because it reinforces their levies and gets it moving forward. We've had numerous conversations with DHS and, uh, SBI, which is the entity for Southern Border Infrastructure to rebuild this, and we're having another meeting this coming week with Fish and Wildlife to finalize the potential of any impact on the endangered species. Last Friday, we were in Washington DC and had a meeting with both the, uh, Department of Homeland Security, the Southern Border Infrastructure, the Interior Department, Fish and Wildlife, IBWC, basically the goal, the whole alphabet was there at the meeting. And basically, everybody was very supportive, that it's, it's a make sense proposition for everybody. It's gotten to the point that DHS, based on their analysis, they have estimated close to three point to three point one million dollars a mile is what their cost would be to build a fence. Not including the cost of acquiring land, not including the cost of condemnation, not including the cost of, of negativity or public input into it, that there, there's a potential of them coming to the table with some money in the tune of three point one million dollars. And what does it do? It addresses environmental issues in which we're not building anything outside the levies, we're building it inside the footprint of the levy. So we would not be tearing down any brush. What else does it do? By using a border reinforcement or hydraulic wall on the levy, the material that is gonna be required to build these levies is not any longer requiring special materials, a certain clay PI, a certain compaction, because basically, once you put up a concrete wall or lining, you can backfill it with whatever material you need. So we continued our evaluation on dollar cost savings, and right now, it's estimated to reinforce the levies on a traditional manner in Hidalgo County was gonna be running about two point four, two point five million dollars a mile. Building it with the concept of the wall behind it, it comes into about five point one million dollars. But it's a direct savings of almost six hundred thousand dollars a mile versus a traditional dirt levy and a reinforced, a reinforced dirt levy. So this concept that we've been pushing forward is a template that they would like if, once we pass through all the glitches, proposed to Cameron County. And again, the issue behind it is that the leadership that we had have been fighting real hard, yourself, Judge, or wherever, and the Commissioners, of no offense, they're looking at the potential of an alternative, they're looking positive on this alternative. They feel that if we can do this in Hidalgo County, we should be able to do it in Cameron County, to avoid the issue of a wall in Hidalgo and a fence in Cameron County. But what is helping Hidalgo County at this time, Judge, is that we have a bond issue, we have money on hand, we have a plan on hand, and it was not an intentional plan, it's something that Hidalgo County has been working on for years for drainage, but we're far ahead of the game. That DHS is saying, okay, we see your plan, we see you have money to come to the table with, let's see if we can work something out. So that is the process in which we're in right now. But again, we're not here, and, and I'm sure y'all have heard, Judge Salinas and our Commissioners, we're not here to put our local taxpayers' dollars to fix a federal problem. We're here maybe to help you underwrite it, but we will do whatever needs to be done to change the law, amend the law, in which the local citizens will get their money back, because this is a federal problem, it's not a local problem, but we live here. But when you have three or four federal agencies, the IBWC, DHS, and FEMA, all in their own world and not talking to each other, it takes coalition of local citizens to pull these federal systems together and look at a common sense approach to addressing the problems that we have to live with. We live in a government that's a reactionary government, they're not proactive, they'd rather come in and spend billions of dollars and disrupt lives after the fact, which you will never get back to where you're at today. So the position of Hidalgo County is to move ahead, not react, but assist and get these people to talk to, and we want to move forward with Cameron County, our neighbor, on this issue, because the issues of the wall, the issues of the levy do not just impact Hidalgo County, it impacts Cameron County. And we have strong communication, both with our judges, Judge Costco there and Judge Salinas, that this is a, this is a situation that infects the Lower Rio Grande Valley. There is no difference between Hidalgo and Cameron County. This can resolve both issues in both communities if addressed properly. And I think that is the flag that we've been running with, not the flag of McAllen or Hidalgo, with the flag of South Texas and the issues that we have here along the border. And that's the, the, not the language, but the comments that our court wanted to bring to Cameron County and saying, let's move forward together. Hidalgo County has almost twenty-two miles, Cameron County, based on the information the DOL statistics gave to us, is about thirty-five miles. The total cost using the levy concept in Hidalgo County is about a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. The cost estimated in Cameron County is about a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. But these are all preliminary because there's no defined analysis being done, and there is no reason to go into the final analysis if this situation's not gonna go. We have a very short window, we presented to DHS our timetables, we've shown them that we can get it built, that the economics is down here in South Texas, that we have the workforce to build this type of structure by their December deadline, which is their federal mandate. So we've shown them that the project can be done if we can get by the mechanism on how we're gonna recapture our money, because our board is very adamant. We are not here to give our local taxpayers to the federal government to address a federal problem. We are here to help you and underwrite it till you fix whatever bureaucracy you need to fix, or do whatever appropriations you need to do, but you've given us three problems from three different federal agencies. You've given us FEMA that you're gonna decertify the area and cost the local citizens a hundred and fifty million dollars a year until you fix, and if you, when you fix the levy. You know, there is no commitment from Congress that say, yes, it's a federal problem, we'll fix it. Then here comes DHS, we've got a border problem in the United States, we're gonna put a fence up here. Okay, so, stick it here. Then we have another problem on the levies themselves, that they're decertified. Well, we'd love to fix them, but Congress hasn't given us money. All we're hearing is excuses. All we're hearing is reasons why things won't get done. And Hidalgo County is, is not gonna allow, or try not to allow, to let these issues happen and brought it to the vote and support of the citizens, and our directive, do what needs to be done to get us out of the potential problem. But again, don't just give them a check, see how we can get our money back.
Thank you, Mr. Gatsa. So, you know, you've been to DC with us a couple of times too, and you know how important the, uh, the regionalism thought process has been. I think it's, whether it's veterans issues, or flood control, or levies, it's something that we have to work as a, as a, as a team, uh, and as a region. So I wanna thank you for your presentation, and I think I've long told you, Hidalgo County was, kind of started this a couple, several years ago, in terms of that, so we, we have a lot of catching up to do, uh, in terms of that. Today, we were, I don't know if you know, but today, Commissioner Mardine was here and they're gonna start working on our levy system, at least get them into that realm that we may not have a, a decertification issue. So I think we'll, we'll be okay with that, but it shouldn't stop there. I still think that the, that the, that the retaining wall concept is a concept that can work, uh, if it's allowed to work, but you're dealing with federal bureaucracies that don't speak to each other.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's, that's a challenge that, uh, that we have, so. Any member of the court have any questions? I know Commissioner Gatsa, Commissioner Tamayo was here this morning, she listened to Commissioner Mardine's presentation, Commissioner Wood. Would y'all like to go ahead and say something at this point? No?
I, I do have a question, Godfrey.
Yes, sir.
When that bond issue was passed, that hundred million dollar bond issue?
Mm-hmm.
Did any of that amount address the levies at all?
Yes, sir, ten million dollars.
Ten, just the ten?
Yes, sir.
The rest, the ninety were for?
For other multiple drainage projects within Hidalgo County.
Okay. So ten million, so because of that fact, you can go ahead and make changes?
That is correct, sir, because there was no specific allocation for specific dollars for specific projects, it was a group of projects that were based in the hundred million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Gatsa?
Yes, ma'am.
In Hidalgo County, you only have one drainage district that covers the entire county?
Yes, ma'am. Hidalgo County has one drainage district that covers all of Hidalgo County, and the Commissioners- of Court sits as our Board of Directors. So, that gives us the capability to have a very good working relationship with the county as a government entity, because the judge sits as the chairman of the drainage district and the Commissioner from the different precincts sits as our Board of Directors. So, it gives us the ability to have a large tax base, because water is not gonna be controlled by any boundary of a drainage district or a city limit or precinct. Water's gonna flow where it's gonna flow. So, that has given us the ability to look at the overall watershed or problems within Adago County and address them as a whole, not in a piecemeal-type scenario.
Any further comments? Do I hear motion to acknowledge Mr. Gottsa's presentation on the levee rehab?
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Gottsa, signed by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries?
Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all wanna take your? Matt with you, or is that Charles? Item number six, consideration and adoption of a resolution number 2008-R1002 authorizing the deposit of the county's 8% gross revenue tax levy used for indigent care into an escrow account. Did you wanna address that, Delvia, or you wanna let Manny do it?
I'm gonna let Manny, but I do wanna make, just clarify that it's not gonna be the 8%. At this point, it's just the 4% that has been collected, and then quarterly thereafter, I think it's March, July, that 2% will be transferred.
What was that, Delvia?
I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
That the 8%, not the whole 8% will be, if you agree to this resolution, it won't be the whole 8% that will be deposited into the escrow account. It'll just be, at this time, it'll be 4% or whatever we've collected at this point in time. And then quarterly thereafter will be, I think, 2% and then 2%.
So, whatever is collected.
We're not depositing ahead of what we've collected.
Right. I mean, we don't deposit it, we don't collect it, in other words.
And I believe that's why it was scheduled the way it is. And good evening, Judge Commissioners, it's good to see y'all again, and Happy New Year to y'all. And just as a refresher, the reason that we've asked the Court to consider this resolution is, if you recall, in October of 2007, CMS made a determination to defer payments on the UPL program. And as you also know, we started the new indigent care corporate entity in Cameron County on September 1st, 2007. And since that date, we have been paying claims on an out-of-pocket basis, on a month-to-month basis. As a matter of fact, through December of 2007, we've paid out approximately 200, I'm sorry, $945,000. We're coming to the Court asking for this resolution as a way of a commitment from the county to ensure that, in fact, at the end of the day, if the UPL program dissolves, as per CMS, then the county is committed on a pass-through basis to pay the new indigent care corporate entity the monies that have been paid out of pocket for the claims. And that's the purpose of the resolution.
Manny, if you would, you said through December, you think the claim amount that's been paid is 945,000?
I believe it. And I asked Pamela Gork to come join us this afternoon, Commissioner, to answer not only that type of question, but I believe you had a question in regards to Galveston?
Yes, I do.
That we can address in a second. But I believe that's the right amount.
And I'm going to assume that even though that's what you paid through December, that's not necessarily December's billings from the different entities. That may be October and part of November even. Maybe not all of November.
That's correct. We're probably closer to $1.1 million so far.
Of incurred.
Which would be total, yes.
Can you explain what the lag is between the receipt of a claim?
Well, it takes time to pay claims.
Right.
I think we all understand that, sure. The other issue that I had, or that I wanted to question about, was the concern of the indigent from Cameron County that would normally go to Galveston for treatment for specific-ish problems that they might have, not having a contract with UTMB Galveston in order to treat those patients. Can you enlighten us on that? I understand that some patients are being, are not being provided the treatment that normally they would have been provided.
Sure. Actually, there was a indigent program recipient that went to UTMB Galveston. It was actually the weekend before Christmas. And I actually have a copy of a letter here that I tried to work out an arrangement with UTMB to care for this person, and it was not accepted. As a result of that, because we did not have a contract in place yet with them, our Vice President and Manager here, Sherry Griffin, has contacted them, their Director of Contract Management, and he's explained that they are no longer contracting with indigent programs outside of their county. So, we're, we may be coming upon an issue with that. So, we're aggressively pursuing that. She is in conversation. We're exchanging contracts and trying to look at some resolution for that. But they have made an arrangement, and actually, Sherry's here.
Since she talked, she's been just dealing with them directly, maybe she can let us know about the last conversation.
Well, if that's the situation, and I'm assuming what you're telling me is correct, then we do have a problem, and we do need to be looking somewhere to get this type of service for the indigent.
Yes. I've had direct conversation with the Contracting Officer in Galveston, and what they committed, or what they told me was that they have a couple of issues. One is that the legislators for the state of Texas have not, has not given them as much money to work with because they believe that it is a county issue, and they do not wanna be taxed twice at the county level and at the state level. They also had a concern about $74,000 that was left owing to them from last year's fiscal year. And they, their resources are being stretched, according to what they communicated to me. And they indicated that they really were concerned about the number of patients that they were getting with no resources, with no financial resources.
And they did indicate that there were $74,000 from last year's fiscal year?
Yes, sir, they did. $74,000.
And we're aware that we do have some outstanding bills to a lot of providers from last fiscal year totaling somewhere $2 million.
They indicated to me that they were owed $74,000 on a bill charge of $210,000.
Okay. Was that again, they were what now? I'm sorry?
74, approximately $74,000 on bill charges of $210,000.
Oh, so, the $74,000 represents the discounted amount?
That's right.
Or the discount amount? Or that's the balance that is due on that 210?
To me, they indicated that was discounted amount.
The discount amount? Okay.
Yes, sir.
This topic is gonna come up again. And as a matter of fact, we've talked about it. We've got our legal division looking at the legality of some of these bills that we have that pertain to a prior year. But just so you all know, this has been going on for a long, long time. We've always used, you know, future monies to pay past bills. And when we entered this agreement with you, all that basically stopped. So, picture a tidal wave coming in. And so, the, Rob Alman, the $2 million that you, that we spoke about about a month ago, that is already the discounted rate? Is that correct? Right now, we're trying to determine, really, number one, do we need to pay it? How we pay it? Do we pay it? And where the resources are gonna come to pay it? But the, what happened at UTMB, would you like to just, I'm a little concerned. Somebody just was not able to get a service? They were referred up there and they were basically denied, denied a service, or what?
Yes, they, the lady who was here, her physician sent her up to UTMB to have a surgery. And she was admitted for that surgery, and then that's when they contacted us. And I advised them that we would be able to work out arrangements for that based upon the benefit that she has through the program. Apparently, something happened. She was discharged. Her physician discharged her, but they remained in the Galveston area in a hotel. And then on the Friday before Christmas, December 21st, they called me and said that she was on her way back into the hospital, and they were ready to work out something that she was gonna have the surgery that weekend. I did the letter, I faxed it up there, saying that we would authorize the service and pay for it and any aftercare that she needed at that point. And then when we came back from the Christmas vacation, I got a call from the daughter that she had been sent back home. When I contacted UTMB again, I was told that it was because she was non-compliant with the prescriptions that she had been given by UTMB in the, at her first admission.
What does that mean, the non-compliant?
That means that she was given prescriptions to go fill, and she did not. And that also she was not nutritionally ready for that surgery. And so, I said, well, you need to send back the orders. We need to get all the orders, all that information, send her records back with her so that she can go back to her gatekeeper, send her back home. If they're not gonna take care of her, there's no reason for them to stay in a hotel and keep that expense going. So, send her back home, let's get her back with her gatekeeper, and let's work on that. And about, I think it was the next week, I heard from the gatekeeper that she had come back in for her visit.
What's the gatekeeper?
And they indicated, well, she came back in to see her gatekeeper with the information. That was Dr. Hussein here, and Dr. Wacar Hussein here. I understand also, in another conversation, that she's being seen by Dr. Sharma here at Texas Oncology, and that he's providing her care also, which we're paying for. So, as far as her medical status, I can't really say if, you know, that was, you know, whether she wasn't compliant or wasn't nutritional. I don't know. That was the reason they gave me.
And obviously, I don't know that either, but I would think that if she is indigent, and I understand the cost of medications, and she's in Galveston, and she may not have had the money to fill those prescriptions, and I would have thought that perhaps maybe through some, through UTMB, maybe, I'm just talking now, just, you know, just kinda talking it out. She may not have been, you know, financially able to comply with her prescriptions.
Well, actually, I'm glad you asked that question, because it reminded me that when I talked to the daughter, the daughter said that she had filled the prescriptions for her mother and that she was taking them.
Okay.
So, it is a confusing.
So, she was taking them, and they said they weren't?
So, there's some contradiction there.
Something in the story doesn't match up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
But UTMB is not taking outside-county indigent, right?
One more question.
One of the things that was mentioned, and I think I heard, was that UTMB was not taking indigent outside of their county for services, with any county.
That was based on the fact?
No, sir, they didn't specifically say they were not taking indigent. They said they were concerned about the resources that were involved in patients, that they wanted to be there as a safety net, but they could no longer afford to be there the way they have been in the past. They indicated that there were 48 contracts with counties and hospital districts right now, that they had also sent a renewal contract to the county here somewhere at the end of June, first part of July, and had not had a response back from the county. They didn't indicate to me who they sent that to at the county level, so they just didn't know.
Okay.
Yes.
We're in constant communication with, or continuing communication in regards to a new contract. Just so y'all know, we're addressing that issue, trying to get a response.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the deposit of, as, what, 4% of the gross tax levy than the balance in accordance with the agreement?
So, move.
Exactly.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, signed by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion?
Judge, at the end of it, it says that, that the remainder of the, or the interest that is earned while it's in escrow, maybe we could use some of that interest to pay some of those outstanding bills. That would be one way of addressing the problem. I know it's not gonna cover it all, but...
What is the, is the, do you all stay with the, with the interest that's earned on the escrow account?
Part of the resolution, Judge, basically indicates that, in fact, any interest that is earned while the monies are in this escrow account are for use of, at the county's discretion.
Comes here and comes back to us for use.
That's right.
Well, we can, that's something that we can, that we can look at.
We still have to address the issue legally before they're not, we can pay those outstanding bills.
That's correct. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Consent items?
Thank you very much.
Just one, one point of clarification. The contract in the packet is the one, or the resolution in our packet is not the one we approved.
There's a new one.
It's a new and approvers it here.
Correct.
They handed out another one. With a correct information.
The consent, consent and travel items, are there any items on the consent and travel that any member of the Court wished to take out and discuss separately? Anything? I'd like to take out item 17 and item 18. 18 simply because legal has not reviewed either 17 or 18, is that correct?
No, I'm sorry, I had when I was in Houston. I had, and my secretary showed me the file where I had, I have reviewed, I just didn't remember it.
All right. Then I don't, I still wanna take out item 17 unless, unless the one that I have in my packet is incorrect. With that, do I hear a motion to approve all consent items and travel items with the exception of item 17 that we'll discuss separately?
So, move.
18 you're gonna leave in.
18 is fine. She's already looked at it. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 17, consideration approval of SEMCO x-ray county contract terms, the portable x-ray machine to be used in the county jails. I just have a couple of questions to whomever can answer them. On page one of the, I guess this goes to you, Delvia, I guess, or the Sheriff's Office, somebody. On page, on page one, terms of the contract, it gives you the terms of payment, and it gives you two options, A, a purchase, or B, a lease. Which one is this one? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a purchase. The purchase.
It's a purchase, Attorney General, Commissioners, it's a purchase.
It's a purchase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you go to page two, the very first item, installation, it says, "Any installation caused from the condition of the premises over time shall be paid by us." Are there gonna be any additional costs that are gonna be incurred with the installation of this machine?
I don't know at this time, Judge. I'll find out.
Okay.
We can, if you wish to table it for...
Um...
I was under the impression it's turnkey, the complete, the price that we have is complete.
Can you find out?
Yes, sir.
The other thing, on, on page two, governing law and venue, it's been our, our practice to have the venue as Cameron County. Down at the bottom, it says Bear County. We'd like to change that to have it Cameron County.
Judge, when I read that, I, I thought the same thing, but I was reading it where it says, where the payment is payable to SEMCO in Bear County.
That's where their offices?
Yes, that's how I read it, because...
Well, that's, well, I want to clarify that if there's any dispute, that the venue is here.
Okay.
Okay? Lastly, time limit, so this offer shall expire unless accepted within 30 days. Are they still making good on this because it's way over the 30 days?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That they are?
We'll get all those corrected and get them back to Delvia and...
Okay. You wanna go ahead and, and I don't have a problem approving it's subject to those corrections being made, Lee. Is that all right, Delvia? Commissioner?
Who's gonna be doing the reading of the x-rays?
The reading of the, I'm, I couldn't really answer you that, Commissioner. I do know that we have a part-time x-ray technician, and I believe the physician reads them initially, and then he passes them off to the radiologist as needed.
So, do we have a contract with the radiologist to do this type of work for us?
Yes, we do.
In place already, right?
Yes, we do, yes, sir.
Because I could see that this would be substantial savings to the county by having the equipment in-house and doing the x-rays there.
It's estimated that we're saving about $30 in x-ray by doing it this way.
And you do how many a year?
Well, we do about 60 a month.
So, so it'd be, you know, it makes sense. It's just a matter of making sure that...
Everything is in place.
We have everything in order.
That's correct.
And in place for the reading and the process. And in place for the reading and the process.
The majority would be the positive TB tests that we do.
Right. Doesn't, the health department doesn't normally do that?
They used to do it, the health department, how long?
On, on TB testing, doesn't the health department have to go in there and do that for them?
No, Commissioner, as far as the TB testing, I believe that when they do the classifications that the skin test is administered, we also, formerly, when Dr. Smith was the TB physician, he would read the x-rays, but the new TB physician, Dr. Wing, determined that that was more of a county function than a state function, so that's some of the causes that the infirmary's picking it up.
Motion for approval pending the...
Legal review will have that corrected.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa to approve it, subject to making those changes and modifications and then getting back to us.
Yes.
Okay? Thank you.
Judge, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to item five, just to clarify that...
Okay, let me, okay, let me skip this one. Do I hear a motion, had a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let's go back to item number...
Item 15, I'm sorry. Just to clarify that we are going to be contracting with the recommended associate's in psychology on that item.
Yes.
It's placed on here as if, they put it on the agenda, which normally isn't what happens, but that's the one that is recommended and...
On 15, on, on item 15, having to do with mental health services, county infirmary, we are, we are approving as, as recommended by the evaluation committee.
Correct? Yes.
Okay, all right.
Who is who we have now?
Who's who we have now, that's correct.
That's what we have now.
All right. Discussion and action items, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge and commissioners, I put in front of you some additional ones. On the first packet, the very first, the one that was included in your packet, the one in reference to JP administration, what that is, is setting up the position, the funding for the position that the court previously approved, the Medico legal death investigator. The salary schedule is attached to that for the salary that was directed by the court. The rest on that particular page are just line item transfers within the departmental budget. And on the packet that was passed out, there are also between line items. The first one in reference to the sheriff's account is setting up some funding for a reward for information leading, leading to the, I believe involving cold cases or stagnant cases that's been run through legal. And the last one is some funding for some printers for a couple of the JP offices from the technology fund. If you have any specific questions.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendments, line item transfers as presented? Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, same by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Delvia, you were here when we got a report on the, on the bridge system. I sent you an email, I think this morning, sometime today. About preparing a six-month review for us. I'd like to have that no later than May the 10th, through, that'd be through March 31st. You may have to get with the auditor's office and Pete to make sure we compile all the information that we can, strictly general fund and probably road and bridge, but more specifically the general fund and see where we are. You're going to have to capture all the revenues that we've budgeted and see how those have come in, so make sure we get with all the fee offices and make sure that they provide all the necessary documentation so you can provide the report. I don't want you to come and say, well, I didn't get this from this fee office. They need to present that information to you so you can give us a, a good report.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Approval of county claims? Any questions on claims? If you'll note, Rob continues to highlight in yellow those items that are over $25,000. Rob, all the items that you highlighted in yellow went through procurement or the bidding process, everything is, is appropriate. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the county claims as presented?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note my abstention on that one claim that I provided to you regarding the public support.
This includes the handouts that we got.
Includes all the handouts, as presented. Consideration, item number 23, consideration and authorization to request RFQs for a construction manager at risk for the addition to the Carisales record facility. Pete?
Judge and commissioners, as you all know, Aguirre Corporation has been assisting the county with the design of the addition to the Carisales record facility. We've had numerous meetings.
Let me, may I ask legal a question before you proceed? Delvia, on the agenda, we have a construction manager listed. On the agenda item request form, we have a contract manager listed. Is there any problem with that?
No, no, I don't think so, Commissioner, because it's, in, in the wording, you have a manager at risk and so I think it gives enough notice of what, what you're going to be looking at.
One says construction and one says contract.
No, I think you're still okay with that.
Okay.
The word contract, I mean, it's just another way of saying contract.
Aguirre, Aguirre Corporation has done a schematic on the addition to the facility and we passed out a layout of the schematic. We've had numerous meetings with the sheriff and his staff. In addition to that, the sheriff has taken that schematic and showed it to the members of, of his staff that are out there on a daily basis. They've marked it up, sent it back to the architect. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting with the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, the executive director, Adan Munoz was there at the meeting. We presented the schematic that we had prepared and it pretty much gave us a verbal approval of the schematic. There's some minor changes that will be made and a couple of issues that the architects will go back and verify, but that will suffice as our first submittal of the schematic, so we'll come back, prepare a letter for the judge so that he can officially submit it to the Commission on Jail Standards. So it's a schematic, and the sheriff is here, it's a schematic that the sheriff feels comfortable with, the Commission on Jail Standards feel comfortable with, so we're pretty much ready to proceed with, with a full design of the facility. In the past, we had talked to the court about the possibility of utilizing a construction manager at risk, and this is what the RF, the RFQ would allow staff to request RFQs for the services of a construction manager at risk. What this would allow us to do, it would allow us to get somebody on board early on that will go through us, through all the pre-construction services, primarily any scheduling issues that we might have and any budget issues that we might have, we can work out at an early stage of the process. This construction manager at risk, you know, will be a member of our team. It'll make our project a lot more manageable, more predictable, and hopefully at the end will allow the county to save money by going this route. This will not be a design-build project, it's a construction manager at risk. And a design-build, the, the same firm will do the design and the construction. Here we have an architectural firm that works directly and reports directly to the county. The construction manager at risk will report directly and will work for the county. So any issues that we might run into as far as any value engineering, we will have two independent, two independent firms looking out for the best interest of the county. It's, it's a process that the architects have discussed with the sheriff and I think the sheriff is prepared to make that recommendation.
Judge, commissioners, we feel on the long run that it is better because we deal directly with one individual. In the event that something goes wrong, well, then the county can come back to that particular individual instead of going after every, every contractor that is out there, which takes a long, long time. On the other hand, by working with this individual, then it's under the supervision of another county and the county judge and us, and we work very closely to see that he does whatever is requested. This is, saves a lot of time and on the long run, he looks for the best prices and the local people that we want here, so it's to the advantage to the county to be really considering something like this. So we have looked at it from different points of view and this is the best thing that we can come up with.
Pete, we're not, are we looking for an individual or a firm? A firm, right?
It'd be a firm, yes.
A firm.
And we've, what we...
But they would not be contract, they would not be employees of the county directly, there'd be a contractual agreement with it.
Right. Exactly, correct.
So, so they, it's, it's not an individual, but it's, it's a firm, a construction management firm...
Right.
That works and represents the county...
That's correct.
As a team.
Right. We, we patterned our, we passed out the RFQ, we patterned that. The UTB TSE has, has used this method very successfully. Sita Brownsville has used it, so we, we looked at, at both of their RFQs and then kind of created one. Hondo Garcia spent a couple of weeks working on this RFQ and so we feel pretty comfortable. We've submitted this also to our purchasing department for their review.
All right. Any, any further discussion?
The only other question I would have is, I've noticed in the recommendations we've been getting lately that our evaluation committee has dwindled to a number of two. And I would hope that, you know, we have a standing committee that has been utilized in the past to evaluate our RFPs or RFQs and that, you know, we have a full committee involved with this process, not just two individuals.
Well, let's go ahead and at this point, let, let's remind everybody who the committee is, because I kind of forgot. Do you recall who the committee is?
We started with five, which was district attorney or representative of the district attorney's office, tax assessor-collector, the budget officer, the county auditor and myself. During the course of this time, the district attorney has resigned as well as the tax assessor-collector, so we were left with three, that'd been the county auditor, the budget officer and myself.
So who's left?
Budget officer, county auditor and Pete Sepulveda. But I've noticed in the other evaluations that we've had recommendations from, there's only been two evaluators.
Right. I think budget officer and myself have been the ones evaluating the proposal.
I, I would like to get the expertise, especially of someone in the sheriff's department on this, I mean, I don't know if we need to bring it back for a subsequent meeting, but, but I would like, you know, at least four people, I would like, hopefully someone from the sheriff's office to be part of that committee and...
We can bring it back at the time that we are going to...
Where we receive them.
When we receive them, let's go ahead and put an item on the agenda to appoint a committee, and I think having a standing committee is, is a good idea. You know, I think we just do that, I think maybe from the budget officer, purchasing, the sheriff's office has to be involved. I mean, I think that they need to be...
Well, you know, we can have a standing committee, Judge, but I think that, you know, when you have an issue such as this that directly impacts the sheriff's department, that we ought to allow a representative from that department.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And we do, when the evaluation committee meets, we normally bring in members of that department in case there are specific questions that need to be answered, so...
But then sometimes the, the issue, the, a member of the committee is already there that, that impacts them, but we can do a standing committee of four or five and then whatever department gets, you know, has a direct impact.
Then they should...
They come in, you know, as a voting member as well.
Have a standing committee and then add whomever needs to be added.
Correct.
According to what the issue is.
And, and I wouldn't have a problem giving that responsibility to the standing committee that does it.
Right.
You know, as long as, I'd just like to see more than two people evaluating what comes in for...
Yeah, it's kind of hard to throw out the high and the low, you know?
You know, yeah.
I agree. All right, so but next time...
And I'm not saying that you've done a bad job, please don't misunderstand me. I just think that, you know, we've got a lot of good minds out there that we can utilize.
Yep. Okay? All right. Do I hear a motion to authorize the, the request for the RFQs as presented by Mrs. Sepulveda?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item 24, discussion and possible action regarding the county property that is being vacated when the Harlingen Annex is open?
Judge and commissioners, I've gotten a couple of calls the last couple of weeks from different realtors that have clients that are interested in the county property in Harlingen. I know at, at one point we had done an RFQ for Realtor Services to assist in marketing the property, but we didn't get any, any proposals, so I'd just like to get some direction from the court if we do want to proceed with the sale of, of a county home property, so I can get direction, get with legal and follow the state statutes in, in doing that.
Would it be inappropriate to, the, the Realtors that called you, to call them back and say, give us a proposal or give us a bid, and then all the ones that called you to do that, because we did try to do this and we didn't get any response from anyone.
Nobody showed interest.
But, you know, Judge, I, I think that perhaps the process wasn't done the way it should have been done or enough advertisement the first time around sometime back. I, I think that, I think that if we revisit that, it might, it might have some results.
Can we just hire a Realtor? We can just hire a Realtor, right? We have that option.
The court has, has that authority.
Hire a Realtor to market it, to advertise it?
Well, I think we, I mean, I, I think you, I think you go back to the issue, who do you hire, because it's going to be a 6% commission of some sort. I mean, so, I mean, who do you give it to?
Either that or advertise it for bids and get a, a minimum that we'll accept for it and get the highest bid, just do it on a bid basis.
For sale by owner.
I think we'll come out ahead then.
Put in the newspaper and, and do that.
Yeah, we, if we do that, you know, we follow the legal requirements.
Way of doing it, yeah.
You want to do that?
There's a bid method, don't you?
I think we should go with that because I think we'll come ahead, we'll come out ahead.
Why don't we do it like that? Just seal bid, put it out and see who bites.
And we have, we have the, the last discretion as far as proven or not.
That's correct.
We have, we have...
Okay, I'll get with legal and, and I'll follow the, the process that's required.
Okay.
Speaking of, of that building, you know, I've had a couple of calls from some of the personnel that has moved out of that building that say they have furniture and items, and I think even your office or, was it your office?
Somebody, yeah, somebody asked to, to use it in storage, we need to go back and see who it was.
Yeah, they wanted to, to get some of the furniture out of there and I understand that all the locks have been changed in that building and that it's being utilized by someone else? Do we have, I don't remember that coming to Commissioner's Court, I've never seen, I don't, I don't think, unless I wasn't here, but I haven't seen us authorizing the use of that building for any, anything other than...
No, that, that, another department within the county asked to utilize that facility on a temporary basis. You know, I know it, it hasn't been temporary because it's been a couple of months, but I can get back with them and, and see what their plans are if, if in fact we are going to sell the property that, that's available there.
Okay. Also, who's using it is, is one of our, our departments?
Yes. If it's, if it's needed for that department on a permanent basis, we need to look at that and see.
And, and I don't have a problem with the utilization of the building, but I think that if, if we vacate a building as a county, you know, I was assuming that building was totally vacant and now I'm told, and, and I had, one of the JP's in particular this last week, on Thursday, called me and says, you know, I need some files from my old office that are still there, I can't get in, I can't get the files, I can't get anything because all the locks have been changed, and I was told that I couldn't compromise the security of the building. I said, well, who's in there? You know, I said, I don't know, she says, I just know that it's, it's keyed out for us. And, you know, if somebody's using it, if it's a department that, I don't, I, I mean, I have no idea what's going on.
Okay.
All right. The, um...
All right. Do I hear a motion to authorize Mrs. Sepulveda to follow procurement in terms of how we're going to sell this building? I guess putting it in the newspaper, for sale, sealed bid?
I'll, I'll get with legal and...
Well, John, should we, should we consider that if it's being utilized, if it's needed or...
Well, we need to look into that and see if whomever's utilizing it actually needs it on a permanent basis.
I'll, I'll do that.
Check it out, just, but I'd like a report, you know, to find out at least what's occurring.
So move, second.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item 25, consideration possible action concerning the county's mileage reimbursement rate. As you know, we talked about this last year a little bit during the military process and I guess there may have been, may have been a misunderstanding. I was proposing that the mileage rate go up to 32 cents.
It was, it was increased, when it was originally brought up, the IRS rate was at 44 and, 44 and a half cents and we were at, at 20 cents. There was a midpoint that was agreed to by the court at 32 cents. In the discussion, I, I had thought it was to go to 32 and then beginning the new fiscal year to go to the 44, but when the actual motion invoked were taken, it was just to the 32 and, and that was...
Yeah, I, I thought the same thing. I thought we were going to go to 44 cents starting October 1st. I thought we were going to go to forty-four cents starting October first. I think that's, I mean, you know, twenty cents, what we were doing is just, you know, somewhat ridiculous, so I asked Javier to bring this back if the court wanted to, well, I don't want to go back retroactive, back to ten-one, but at least starting February one, let's say, you know, take it to forty-four cents. Now, the IRS has recently again bumped it up, but I don't think we...
Effective January first, they went up to fifty cents.
Yeah, and I'm not proposing that at this point, but at least the initial discussion, the initial discussion was thirty-two and then forty-four, I think was what we talked about.
Forty-four, forty-four and a half.
I think it's forty-four.
I think it was forty-four and a half.
Yeah, before you fill out your time.
You just made some money tonight.
Forty-four.
Okay. I think that February first, forty-four.
Go to forty-four.
Yeah, forty-four, that sounds good. Do I hear a motion then?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gataza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Now, this will be effective starting February the first.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Javier. Item twenty-six, consideration, authorization to pay county share of annual maintenance for interoperable communication equipment. That's yours also?
Judge and Commissioners, this invoice was forwarded to me by Emergency Management. The Lower Real Grand Valley Development Council had purchased some additional equipment to enhance the interoperable communication project, and they split up the annual maintenance between all the various entities. The county share is $757. We'd never participated in this before, so that's why it's before you for consideration.
And why are we participating in it now?
From Emergency Management.
For what reason? What are we getting out of it?
Did everybody agree to do this? Everybody within the council? Do you know?
It was, but before the council, it was approved, I don't know if it was unanimous, but...
Judge, our information was that the Development Council via the HSAAC Committee voted on this issue. There were a number of devices that were purchased, they're called ASU-1000s, and they create the ability for us to talk to the other counties, Hiduggal and Willacy. And it's basically a programming link that allows their systems and our systems to interoperate. Those were purchased through state funds and included one year of maintenance. The second year of maintenance, the members of the HSAAC Committee agreed to fund from each county based on population, and it was approved during that cycle that Cameron County's portion would be $757.
So this goes back to oh-six though?
I'm sorry?
This goes back to oh-six.
Yes, sir, it does. It covered one year of maintenance with the installation. Now they're asking for a payment, and apparently this was never brought to you by the previous administration.
Y'all recommend it?
Yes, sir.
Find a source of funds? Okay, all right.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gataza, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you.
I have one question. Does it work?
Yes, sir, it does. If you recall, during the ramp-up for Hurricane Dean, we had a trailer out here, that's what it is.
Exactly, so it works.
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you.
We also conducted a mock drill at the Port of Brownsville and utilized this equipment, and we were able to talk to all the responders. Had a bunch of people come from West Laco, McAllen, all over the region, and we were able to talk to them.
Good. Thank you. Small price to pay.
Yeah.
Really is. Okay. Item twenty-seven, discussion and possible action regarding Cameron County positions assigned to the Texas Regulatory Family Protective Services. Yvette?
Good evening, Judge and Commissioners. My last child welfare presentation was in June 2007, and during that presentation, there was some discussion regarding the five county employees. For the last couple, the five county employees that was assigned to CPS, for the last couple of months, I have been in discussion with a CPS representative regarding the duties of the county employees and compliance with county policy. And the CPS representative, at the same time, has been reporting back to authorities within their agency, and they have determined that compliance with county policy places an administrative burden on their supervisors and other individuals within the CPS agency. Therefore, they have requested that the county employees be transitioned back to the county, and so they asked for a thirty-day transition time period to allow them the opportunity to funnel some of the job duties of the county employees to other state employees. We agreed on a March one timeframe, and so the last day that we currently expect the county employees to be working with CPS will be until the end of February. March one's a Saturday, but that's what we agreed to. Currently, there are three vacancies and two employees that we're talking about. As part of the agenda request form, I did include a document that I utilized with the CPS representative to go back and forth regarding some of the concerns and some of our discussions just for documentation and discussion purposes. And this also gives the court an opportunity to see what it is that we've been discussing for the last couple of months. I can continue to update this document and forward it to the court, but where it stands right now, it appears that the county will be absorbing the county employees that were assigned to CPS.
On the vacant positions, is it Shaw's intent to fill them, or do you need just not to fill them? If they were doing CPS stuff, and we got five, now we got two that are left, two that are left, you got three vacancies, do you find a need to fill them, or can we just eliminate those slots?
Well, we're not intending to fill them for CPS, so at this time, those positions are frozen.
No, I understand that, but if they've been doing CPS work for X amount of time, now you've got three vacancies, and my question is, and they're not going to be doing CPS stuff now, then why do we need to keep the slots? Why can't we just eliminate the slots altogether and save them some money?
That's probably something that, you know, I'll probably need to bring back to the court and see what it is that they want to do.
Unless you're going to fit them in somewhere, but where are you going to fit the two that were at CPS now? Do you have stuff that they can do with the help of, within your department or what?
Restructuring?
Actually, there are some things that we can do, you know, within our department with the five slots, but at this time, we're really just trying to focus on the transition. The two employees did meet with some of the program directors within our department, and we went through some of the vacancies, or some of the possibilities, or some of the unmet needs, and that's as far as we've gotten with it. It's been a one-time meeting, and so we, our plan is to meet with these two individuals, these two county employees, on a weekly basis until we figure out, you know, what their strengths are and what they might be suitable for within the department, whether that's under the child welfare budget, or that's, you know, something else that gets worked out.
And these are general fund monies, correct?
Yes, Judge, they are.
And they total, what, almost $100,000?
Yes, Judge.
Well, I would think that if there's someone that you can somehow, through attrition, not need those spots anymore, just look at not filling them, and it's just, here we are in the budget, that saves us a hundred grand that we don't really need to spend, or you'll maybe utilize it somewhere else that it's needed, but if they're coming in, you've never had them, I mean, keep the two off.
Doesn't mean we didn't miss them.
No, yeah, exactly, but I think there's no point in filling them if you don't have to fill them.
Well, at this point, they are frozen, and CPS is not going to rehire and, you know, and I need more direction when we actually find out where we are March one with these employees. It's possible, one of them has been working for the county for 22 years.
You're talking about one of the two that stayed?
Yes, we had...
Well, I'm talking about the three that are vacant.
Those are vacant.
Yeah.
Those slots are frozen.
I understand, okay, well, just, when y'all go through the budgetary process, look at, if there's a way to eliminate them and not need them, why keep them? That's all I'm saying. If they're not there, you've worked without them, then, you know, save $100,000 if you can.
Okay, but you're going to come back to us with, after, at the end of February, or when, before that, in reference to those positions?
Yes, Commissioner. The two county employees have been told that if there's something within our department that they don't really want to work with, then to please look at the Human Resources website and see what positions might be available, and to apply like any other county employee would, and then they're also taking a look at some of the state positions as well.
Are those slots protected by civil service?
At this time, yes, they are.
They are, right? Well, the two are, yeah. The two that are filled, that's what I'm talking about.
They are civil service employees.
Well, try to, I would think you try to absorb them into our, you know, into our, I'm not concerned about those, but try to absorb them into the system, but the other three, there's no need to keep them, you know?
No reason to hire three more that you haven't been using all these years already anyway.
Okay, at this time, they are frozen.
And when you do present the information back to us, I would like to see an attached budget for that.
An attached budget, the child welfare budget?
Yes.
Okay.
For salaries, the total budget.
Okay, we can, I'll bring it back, but in the meantime, we can send you a copy of the...
Or just email it to us or something.
I'll email the salary schedule and the child welfare budget.
Yeah. Well, I think you need to identify, remember, the child welfare budget is this pretty big budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes, it includes...
Identify what the five positions impact.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll work with the Budget Officer on that.
Just that portion of it.
Okay.
All right, okay. Well, really, there's no action we're going to take today, right? Just acknowledge...
Acknowledge report.
Acknowledge report.
Yvette, and then just come back to us in March, okay? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Ms. Sonez's report?
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-eight, consideration, authorization to adjust funds for the previously selected county coastal impact assistance program Tier One and Tier Two projects. Javier?
Yes, sir. Judge, Commissioners, you all recall, several weeks ago, the General Land Office came down and had a workshop here with Commissioners' Court, and what they've done is they presented us with a draft copy of the coastal impact assistance program plan that they're going to submit to MMS for final approval, and what we had in there, in our Tier One and Tier Two projects, we had the match for the construction, if we got state funding from CAPP, from the CAPP money, which was in the amount of $76,234, which is on the first page under authorized use number four. So what we did was, this is staff's recommendation, is to move at $76,234 because it's not enough to do any improvements to the boat ramp over at Doftame. We'd move it over to the shoreline stabilization on the Tier One project for Tamee Park, so we can extend the shoreline stabilization project out there. And what we've done is we've combined, you see on the second page, we've combined 2007 and 2008 with the $76,234, which totals $229,468.
Did you all have the opportunity to run this by the Parks Board? Does this go to their review, or no? Are they involved at all in this?
Not on the CAPP, not on the CAPP. On the projects we did, projects, yes.
The projects, do they, this does not impact their reviews or anything like that? And I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
No? Okay.
I don't think so.
You're saying no?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
These are CAPP monies that are completely...
Yeah, so it doesn't happen.
But they're involved in the projects per se, but not in the...
That's correct. They know of all the projects that we've submitted.
All right.
That's what they, that's what is in their discussions.
Right.
That's the means.
The very beginning. Now, what we did was, we just, staff, we've talked about it, and we figured, and we talked to our, one of the consultants that assisted us with the first phase of the shoreline stabilization and with the design of the boat ramp drawings, and he also recommended that we should put in the shoreline stabilization. And next round of money in 2008, then we would apply for the Tamee Park boat ramp again.
Any further discussion?
Motion for approval.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gataza. Any, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-nine, consideration, authorization to increase slot zero-one from budget 83069, I mean, I'm sorry, 6691 by $2,914, and decrease slot zero-four from budget 830-691 by same amount, $2,114.
Judge, Commissioners, on this one here, what we did was, we had merged or created a new division. What we've done is, we were trying to merge and get all our maintenance, groundkeepers from various departments or divisions together so that we can save on purchasing equipment and so on. What we did was, we created this Greens Division, and what they do is, they go out throughout the county park system and mow grass, trim trees, and so on, and when we did this, we did it as a trial basis, and it worked real well, so this new fiscal year, we created the new department, but we never increased the supervisor's position, so that's why I'm requesting today.
So what you did was reduce the restructuring within your department?
But slot four is filled today?
Yes, sir.
So that salary is going to be reduced?
That's correct. He is not making what we moved him over, because we moved him over from the Construction Division from Isablanca, and his slot was a lot more, but we moved that whole slot over to Greens Division, and he's not making the amount that was allotted in that cap.
Okay.
Already.
So he's not actually getting a decrease in salary?
No, sir.
I just wanted to make sure that...
And there's still room with the amount that we have here, there's still room in case we do give him an increase in salary.
But you're not going to do that?
Within?
No, no.
Okay. Motion for approval.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion?
Just let me make a correction. When I said from budget, the agenda item left out of six, so that should be from budget 8306691 by 2,914. Okay, any further discussion?
Question. Slot one will be at the salary that you put on there, right, as?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it'd be the 25, 102.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say is, I did attach the salary schedules, and it was signed. I know you ought to request that before.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty, consideration, authorization to increase slot zero-two from budget 830-654 by $2,150, and decrease slot zero-two from budget 830-652 by the same amount.
Again, this one here, when we did the reconstruct, or not, the re, what do you call it, the restructuring of, when we merged and created Greens Division, what we did was, the employees that we had at Brownie Road, that were just handling Brownie Road, now what they're doing is they're in charge of all the community parks for any repairs, and matter of fact, they're doing the construction of Los Indios Park. We're doing that in-house with those employees, and one of the employees that we moved from Brownie Road to this, to this division, he was getting paid, I think, like $17,000 on a minimum, but he has a lot of experience and abilities. He works with heavy equipment and so on, so he helps out a lot, and he was getting ready to move to, you know, get another job somewhere else because he just couldn't make it, so that was the reason I wanted to increase his salary, so we can keep him. He's a good employee, he's been with us for a long time, and he has a lot of experience, and of course, like I said, he knows how to operate heavy equipment and so on, so he helps us out a lot.
And again, that slot zero-two, that person is presently getting what? In other words, you won't see that being decreased? He's already getting that amount, or am I...
That is correct. He's already getting...
Just stay where he's at.
Right. And we're not reducing the employee's salary either, it's just whatever's in that slot.
Moving money around.
Well, but you're doing it because, I mean, he's actually undertaking a different work.
That's correct.
I mean, he's actually working different. He's consolidating, you're doing some consolidation in some of these divisions, right?
Right. Right.
So you're not getting the increase because he's been here a long time, or a good guy. He's getting it because he's actually assigned additional responsibilities and duties to him.
His job description, his job description has changed.
Right, yeah, and what he would do is, he would mow grass and pick up trash and stuff like that, but now he's actually in the construction, uh, phase of, of our division, so he's, he's handling, you know.
Actually doing some supervision, actually.
Okay, do I hear motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Thamaio. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-one, discussion and possible action regarding the county, state, and federal legislative agenda. Uh, there, there is none. Do I hear motion to the table?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Thamaio. All those in favor to table item thirty-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Last item. Item thirty-two, consideration and authorization for Cameron County Expanded Nutrition Program to occupy space at the Cameron County San Berno Annex Building.
Judge and Commissioners, uh, I've got a request from the, um, Expanded Nutrition Program. Um, they're interested in leasing space, uh, that's available at our building in, um, San Benito, and so I would just need, um, authority from the court to negotiate a lease, an lease agreement, um, with the Expanded Nutrition Program.
This is a Levi building?
They are, they are currently in Harlingen, paying rent at a building on F, no, uh.
F Street?
No, it's not F, it's, uh, the one, the, the road that goes to the, uh, Harlingen Municipal Auditorium.
Fair Park?
Fair Park.
Fair Park.
Yeah, they're currently leasing over there, and there is space there that is empty.
There's empty space available?
And nobody's.
They are willing to pay rent for the space, but they need some improvements done. And what I suggested, and I had a meet with Pete and. We had a meeting with, uh, I think it was Eddie?
Yeah.
And trying to get information to see what it would cost to make the modifications that they would require to utilize the space, and then see what kind of rent we would have to charge, it would fit their budget. But, uh, if, if we don't rent it out to someone, someone will occupy it for their rent.
That was my question, 'cause I didn't realize we had any vacant space there. I know when we were scheduling and planning, everyone was fighting over space, and.
Yeah, there's about four thousand square feet that had been used as storage by the contractor that kinda has finally been cleared up.
Kinda left.
Yeah.
Good.
So, and as Ruben Salasad, we are visiting and talking to with the area individual in charge for, uh, the extension service.
So, the item that we're, that we're, um, asking to consider, we still have to negotiate a amount of rent?
Right, just give me authority to negotiate.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion to do that, and, and have, give them the authority to negotiate for, uh, for some rental?
Well, I, I'd wanna know, I'd wanna know before, and, and I, and I'm, I'm in favor, you know, anytime we can make money, but I wanna make sure that, that we know what they're going to want us to do.
Yeah, well, and I'll bring that back to the court.
What's the cost be, and so on, and then negotiate a rent accordingly.
Yes.
'Cause we don't wanna be out money, we wanna make money.
Definitely, definitely. And I think that they're looking at, uh.
It's your motion, okay.
Figure it out.
Okay.
Judge, Judge and Commissioners, I do wanna remind you that there is a process that the county has to follow when we lease property. And, um, so, I would have to, to look at it again at the statute, to make sure that we're following that, that procedure.
Yeah, but it's, it's another, it's another governmental entity though.
It's kinda like the extension service.
Yeah.
Okay?
So I don't know, there may be some, some special.
I'll get together with.
They might want to agree if we don't.
Well, can you get together with, with W, just check it out? We don't wanna do anything that's illegal or inappropriate. All right, do I hear motion? Commissioner Thamaio, um, made a motion, saying by Commissioner Gadsden, to authorize Mr. Puleto to look into leasing the space, and coupled with, with legal, to make sure that we do it right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Thamaio, saying by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. God save this honorable court.